Call the order of the Dallas City Council meeting for Monday, November 20, 2023. Before we get started, I have a note I want to share with everybody. There's been discussion recently in the news and social media regarding the potential development of a homeless shelter from property in Dallas by Church of the Park. The development that could be under consideration would require a conditional use permit to allow the shelter to be located in the industrial zone. The conditional use permit, if filed, would be addressed through the land use process, which includes the opportunity for public comment and testimony at public hearings that would be held for that purpose. And all public comment and testimony concerning the project must be presented at those land use hearings. The City Council will not receive public comment on the subject for the proposed project at this council meeting. Public comment on homelessness in general will be received, but the comments on the particular project that may be the subject of a land use application must be reserved for public hearings or any application that may be filed. So with that, Secretary Call the roll, please.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Berantos.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Jantsch.
Here.
Counselor Shane.
Here.
Counselor Verden.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is introductions, recognitions, or proclamations.
So we don't have any introductions or recognitions tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is public comment. I'll read our policy to you on public comment. Please provide us with your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. It is your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor, and the mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. If amatory or libelous comments will not be accepted, distraction to take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time of being respectfully quiet. Thank you, Madam Secretary. So the first one I got is Ann Hurd.
Good evening, Councilwoman. I'm here, City Manager, Councilmember. I'm on 623 Southwest H Street, the president of the Friends of the Dallas Aquatics Center. And we have contributed over $150,000 to a pool in the last four years. And our last big purchase was a $10,000, a little more than that, valve for the boilers because it wasn't working. And when you have two boilers and the big five pools, you try to make sure both of them are working. So they got that then. We got the lift in, the ABA lift. I hope you saw the picture in the paper. It was a great picture. The neighbor was paralyzed from a terrible accident, actually being lowered, who she walked back and forth with weight on her feet. It's just wonderful. It's just, we waited so long for that, we all have. And it's about time to send out our donor letters and our banner renewal letters. And we'll be doing that in December. We are getting our final draft of our website up. It'll go live probably as soon as we get our PayPal account because we've applied for a debit card. So people will be able to donate through the website. And we'll let you know what that website is when it's ready, when it goes live. So we're really excited about that. We think it'll be much easier for, like when Ian Roof bought that Senjake banner, he wanted to just put it on a credit card. But he had to come all the way over to the city and put it on the city's credit card to go into our trust account in the city because we didn't have a credit card. But now that's all going to be simplified and hopefully be very beneficial to us for our bottom line. I want to talk about the road show. There were at least two road shows at the pool. They were very well attended. The reason they were well attended is because the Dallas Aquatic Center and the staff and all the teachers there for aquatics and aerobics and everything told the people about it, and that's why they came. And there's where your votes for the Parks and Recreation came from. However, 200 positive responses, or however many there were, is only a drop in the bucket compared to the school district that would have to vote to support that pool. And their money would also support, you know, the police and fire. And I'm glad we're not having a Parks and Recreation district. I don't want Parks and Recreation district. The city only paid $400,000, that's their almost million dollar budget last year, for the pool upkeep because they had so many people come in to buy memberships, and we helped them with lots of $150,000 worth of big expenses. And we just don't think it's necessary for the pool. The pool's doing great the way it is. Jennifer Ward does fabulous job of supervising Parks and Rec. Chet Gretchen Knoll, my gosh, there are so few lifeguards. She's out there finishing the painting on the slide after hour. We said, oh, please hire somebody to do it, we'll pay for it. No, I said I'd do it, I'm going to do it. She's amazing. So anyway, what else did I write here? Yeah, the numbers voting for the Parks and Recreation were skewed, I think, because of all the pool people that attended the road show. But you know, the neat thing about the road show is it's let so many people know about how things work here and why we need more in the general fund and why we need to raise money for the general fund. And when Brian came up with this alternative special fee that can go up or down, I just thought it was brilliant. And I'm hoping that the council will tonight to do that and just forget about voting for levy. That will never pass anyway. And besides, a special fee is so much cheaper for everybody than any kind of a property tax level. Love you. Okay. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Senator.
Okay, next is Mary Ann Blanchard.
Welcome.
I'm Mary Ann Blanchard.
Can you speak? Speak into this. Please.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Blanchard. I am the owner of Indigenous Arts that opened at 143 Southwest Court Street here in Dallas. Moving and opening my business to Dallas has been a blessing in many ways. The welcome from the Dallas Downtown Association and the Dallas Chamber of Commerce was amazing. The locals that have visited my shop are amazing and kind so far. Not once have I encountered any racism or hate since being here, both of which I was very warned about in this community. Dallas, Oregon, so far, has been very accepting and seems progressive with the times, even though past stigmas still stay alive. Mentally ill, homeless, and addicts are things all major cities have, which is why I chose to move to, from Albany, to a place like Dallas, closer to home, closer to my tribe. I honestly didn't expect to see the same things here as in Albany or Salem, or deal with vandalism and being asked for money and asked for cigarettes out of my business. Since September 2nd, I have had to call the Dallas Police three times. Two of the three times was for vandalism that I do have on camera. Both times, these vandals were visibly impaired. There wasn't much the police could do, if anything, and I feel that that should change. I could visibly see on officers' faces the disappointment in my call. Both officers were patient, understanding, and very knowledgeable, but it seems their hands were tied. There was nothing that could be done to help me or the mentally ill addicts that did.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Williams.
Mr. President. I'm Jim Williams. I live on Barbary Avenue, a couple blocks from the Aquatic Center, next to the path. Boom, 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 boom. That's the skateboards going over there. Whatever. It's beautiful, beautiful. Four years, the city manager has presented a budget to the city council. Every year for the past four years, that message said, we are overspending our income. Yet not one of those budgets decreased spending within the limits of your income. I served several years on the Budget Committee, one year last year as the vice chairman, much to the chagrin of Nancy over here. I requested several things. None of them happened. I came to the conclusion that the city council nor the city manager listens to the citizens. The solution that the city manager came up with was, instead of cutting budgets and reducing budgets, last added, first out type of situation, oh, what a concept. It was, let's add more fees to go ahead and increase so we can go ahead and continue the increases in funds that we said we were overspending for the last four years. I really have to stop and think about that, and I wish you would tonight before you vote on any of these increases. Get an interesting calculation. Got the notice that the city increased the garbage fees at the request of the Republican. Those garbage fees wiped out my proposed social security increase for this next year. In fact, I went in the hole. I went back for the last several years, increase in city budget and fees to the city, overspent my social security income. In other words, I got the income, gave it to the city, plus then I gave more to the city. You have one heck of a lot of senior citizens in this town. Many have gone ahead and paid taxes for years and years and years. But, you know, we're just going ahead and saying to the city manager, you said for four years we're overspending, but we're just going to spend more and more and more. You've got three or four priorities in this city. You've got police, you've got fire, you've got medical. Those are the first three things. 2017, this city council adopted a comprehensive plan for fire and medics. Have you done anything? No. What that plan did was say that you have to have paddles on the chest within 10 minutes of a heart attack, or that guy's gone, or that woman's gone. Nothing has been done to help that situation. But yet, the city is going on. And all respect to the Aquatic Center, we paid off the bonds. What do we do? We put the bonds right into the maintenance instead of putting it into medical care for our citizens. I hope, I really hope, that your last city council, or you went ahead and, not city council, it was supposed to be a meeting, but you spent $660,000 for a new building. I sure as heck hope that that's for a police station, improvements to the police station. Because it was in 2004, I think, Mayor, that you and Brian Dalton pushed a bond levy to increase the police department and give them adequate facilities. What is that, 23 years? 21 years, something like that? And we have done zero. So we have done zero for the police department, we've done zero for our medics.
Can you wrap this up, Jimmy?
I want to comment and compliment Polk County for their outreach to all communities within the county and developing a homeless plan. The city should go ahead and take high note of that. The last comment I'll go ahead and make was sort of something that Counselor Verden was saying about collection of signatures, $25,000. I would ask the counselor to go ahead and sit with the city manager on what city employees can do in elections, collecting signatures, even if they're pages, I think is not within the boundaries of state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? Anybody on the phone? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and it concludes the November 6, 2023 work session meeting minutes. It includes the November 6, 2023 city council meeting minutes, and includes the October 2023 financial report. Are there any comments or taken off or taken on?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, sign if I have a say in.
Aye.
All opposed? Curious unanimous. Next thing is reports or comments from the mayor and city council. Are there any comments, reports? Right along, next is reports from the city manager and staff.
I think Mayor Woods. So the first item is the general fund discussion. And I do appreciate both Ann and Jim's comments. I'll speak a little bit to those as I walk through this report. I won't spend a lot of time in the report. Staff are recommending the alternative solution, which was based on the feedback we received from the public during the road shows. It includes incremental increases to the current public safety fee, which is collected through the city billing system, going from $4.95 today to $12.50 starting in July, and then incrementally increasing over the next five years. And so, a couple comments. I appreciate Jim's comments about, and he got right that for the last four years since I've started working here, I've quickly alerted the council to the sustainability of the general fund long term. And I'll disagree with Jim on the first point, which was, we did make cuts in the first year. I eliminated, I believe, six or seven positions out of the general fund to be able to get us through that first year because we were, as a city, overspending quite significantly. And so we took the quick lead down to a slow lead right away, and that bought us time to be able to then have these conversations and discussions on what the best solution was going to be long term. We've also, over the last 20 years, for sure, have increased the number of our officers in our police department. Our fire personnel have gone from volunteer predominantly to a combined department with great paid professional staff. We see several of them in the back tonight. And we've added some positions over the last few years in that public safety arena as well. And so I think we have supported public safety, and this proposal in the general fund with the alternative solution continues to sustain that investment in our public safety personnel over the next five years. A couple of notes, there are some different options that the council can consider tonight. Really looking at, from the general fund road shows and the five-year alternative solution, you're looking at options, really three options for revenue generation, a five-year operating levy and removing the public safety fee on the bill, the five-year operating levy and increase in the public safety fee on the city bill, which is results in a lesser levy amount, or the alternative solution. Those three generate enough revenue to sustain the general fund for what we forecast over the next five years. And so that's really the options that are in front of the council tonight to be able to make a consideration and decision. Just one final note, again, staff's recommendation is on to select the alternative solution. As part of that, staff would recommend in the motion to create a resolution to be able to create that fee for the next five years. In addition, in that resolution, you would have a provision that the city council would annually review the prior fiscal years, audit a general fund revenues and expenditures, and consider any needed adjustments to the fee for the following July. And then the final part of that motion would be to prepare an ordinance repealing Dallas City Code Section 3.900 to 3.916 effective June of this and coming year, which is where the current public safety fee exists. So implement a resolution that establishes those fees over the next five years, repeal the existing ordinance that has the fee in place today, and then review that fee each year to make sure the proposed fee or what's been approved, if it needs to be adjusted, can be done so.
If we make a decision tonight, let me reword that. If we decide not to make a decision tonight, that still is not very clear. If we decide not to make a decision, whatever, you know what I'm trying to say. What are the potential ramifications of that?
So this is not a decision that has to be made tonight. I would recommend making the decision sooner than later because I need to prepare a budget for next year.
Can you put some parameters on what that would look like, what the sooner would look like?
So we start doing budget prep in December for getting a budget adopted by June. We need to kind of have some clear direction on what we're doing by, we would love to have it by the end of January because when we hit February, we're really cranking on what a budget looks like. If you're going to put a levy out, we will draft two budgets, one that has a levy passing and one that has a levy failing. And we would, in the passing scenario, maintain service levels, and a failing scenario, we would have a budget that would reflect some significant cuts to be able to adjust to what's needed with the revenue that we have for next year. But really knowing, in order to get a ballot measure onto the May election, you have to have that decision made in February so that we can get that onto the ballot for May.
So the longer we take, the harder we make this decision.
Yes, yes.
So as I mentioned before in the workshop, I think my preference being that the public really hasn't had, they had the opportunity to hear about the other four options when we did the road shows. Unfortunately, by far, the majority of people didn't participate in that and find out the options. But I don't feel like, really hardly anyone has been aware of this alternative solution. And having us put through the public safety fee increase, I don't believe a levy would pass, but I would like to wait two to four weeks to allow public input, more education for the public, and for them to be able to give input on what they think about us doing that with increasing it gradually up to $30 a month. So I'd actually like to postpone the vote on it for two to four weeks.
Yeah, and so if we were to do that, the public education, I think that we could certainly put out is, we could do some social media recognition on that, we could put out a survey through our survey company that, you know, we have a contract with Polco for surveys. And so we could do that, put a survey out, that would be for the general public to be able to comment on and gather feedback that way. So, and then you would be coming back to, if you want like two to four weeks, you're looking at the first meeting in January to make this decision in order to kind of gather the feedback that you're looking for.
Well, even without a survey, if we just allowed for two to four weeks of public testimony, whether people email, call, or come in, and even social media would get out the word well enough, I don't want to pay a survey company to gather data.
We already, they're under contract. We have them because we did the community survey for that's for a yearly deal, so we're not paying anything extra. I would say that if you just wanted to allow, you know, people to submit written comments and/or come to the next council meeting on December 4th to provide feedback, we can do that as well. You're still looking at January, the first meeting in January for a decision. I'm just giving you the timeline.
I'd like to see that.
So, yeah, I mean, if you want to go that route, I just need some direction on what type of community engagement you're looking for.
Can someone say suspend this for two to four weeks? I think everybody's done.
Okay. So, yeah, then with that, Nancy's not a really, but if you want that, what type of community engagement do you want staff to encourage?
Before we do that, I just want to, because I was going to ask the same question that they asked, I just want to be clear that if we do this, postpone this until January to allow information gathering, that's not going to materially complicate your budget process waiting that long.
No, I mean, you know, a lot of the budget process that we do in December is creating and refining our capital improvement budget.
So this isn't really, this isn't really time critical at this point yet?
Not yet. I mean, if you delayed beyond the first meeting in January, then it starts getting a little bit more complicated. You know, just meaning we would start doing work and then start repeating work that we've already done. But, you know, January is really the deadline for us to know what we're doing. So again, what I'm looking for then is if this gets postponed beyond tonight, what type of community engagement do you want staff to work on to gather that input? Do you want us to just put out some social media posts saying, hey, come to the council meeting, or submit written comments to the council, and here's the, you know, Kim's address that can take all that? Or do you want us to put a survey out listing, you know, a few of the options and gathering feedback that way? Do you want us to do both?
Brian, is the survey something that we can share and spread on?
Yes.
We can get it like our time to all the community engages and stuff.
Yeah, I'm in favor of both of those.
And to be clear, the survey would not cost us anything out of pocket, and let's do it.
I just was, because it doesn't really hit any, it's only capital projects, capital fund projects that, and for the first few years, so we really, I mean. Yeah, a large lift of the increases in the first few years in particular are to pay for the additional capital projects that have been deferred for years. So that's what you're really paying for in the first few years. We start really diving deep into, you know, personnel, having to cut personnel in some out years. But if you're not going to provide any funding in the first year, then we still need to make those capital investments. And so then you're looking at personnel reductions earlier on, right? We can't continue to delay the capital projects. That's one of the issues, right? We just talked about this not long ago when we made the decision to move away from a training facility to a fire truck. And the purpose for that, in large part, was because of fire insurance for the community members. And the purpose for that in large part was because of fire insurance for the community members, right? If we operate a fire truck that's 30 years old or older, everyone's fire insurance in town goes up. We don't want to do that, right? So that's why we bought a fire truck, because we needed to. And there are other capital projects that if we don't do them now, you know, we're going to find similar problems or make projects more expensive. Mark, our librarian, gave me a great example today as we're working on remodeling the restrooms in the library. And, you know, as you start to uncover the floors and getting other things, you find more problems. We've not renovated those bathrooms since we've owned the building. And so a project that we initially budgeted for $90,000 has grown to about 150. And we're going to spend that additional money because we need to make it right, right? And so as you delay, you know, capital projects and delay them out longer, they become more expensive, they become more complicated, and and we as a city just can't continue to afford to do that.
Okay, should I move on?
Yep, so sounds like that's what we'll do on this item. So we'll get a survey out later this week and we'll encourage people to provide written testimony to the city. We'll gather that up and provide that to the council on the first meeting in January.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so the next item is the purchase from Eagle Newspapers, Inc., a purchase agreement. The proposed purchase agreement is is attached to the report. This is for the Itemizer Observer Building next door to City Hall. A couple of notes on this. One, it is not using general fund revenues to pay for this building. The money that's being used to pay for this is American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which were federal funds given to every city across the United States. And the city of Dallas fortunately has decided to use those funds for capital projects. It's one-time revenue, so you made the smart decision to make one-time purchases and not investments in ongoing programs or personnel, which the one-time revenue can't sustain long term. So the the purpose for this purchase is for a police station. And that is why we asked for a 90-day due diligence period so we can do some preliminary investigative work to make sure that that building will suffice for the purposes that it's being planned for. Again, the purchase price is $660,000. Did I get that right? Yep, from memory. And there's a one, a $6,600 earnest money deposit that we would put down as part of that. Closing costs are split evenly between the buyer and seller. And then there's some some additional costs that will go into that due diligence period, environmental assessment, and some design professional work to make sure the building will meet our long-term needs. And so that's what I have, and there's a recommended motion.
I move to approve the purchase agreement for property located at 147 Southeast Court Street and authorize the purchase agreement.
Second, second.
The building is going to be leased out to the itemizer.
Yes, so. Right, so there's no, there's no immediate plan to do a project to convert that building into a police station right away. And so you're probably looking at least two to three, four-year project to make that happen. And so in the meantime, we would continue the lease agreement with Itemizer Observer Newspaper. And as long as we're leasing out that space, it is a taxable property. So the city would pay property taxes on that property and and tax revenue would be divided out to the taxing authorities.
More questions? Oh, the favor of the motion of purchasing the itemizer observer building for 660,000 is signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, carries and has.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the last item for the city manager report is the Lock Rail Master Plan Update. And we have our consultants with us, but I'll invite Charlie Mitchell, our economic and community development director, to come up and provide this report.
Thanks, Brian, Mr. Mayor, members of the Dallas City Council. So earlier this evening during your work session, it was discussed and noted that one of the long-term solutions for your general fund issue is to create a more diversified tax base and specifically to put in inventory more commercial land. This is one of the steps to get you there is to update this this Lock Rail node to create more commercial land in this area of the community. So without further ado, I just wanted to kind of set the stage and also just to note that what you're being considering tonight is a recommendation from the planning commission to move this project ahead. You are not formally changing or adopting any changes to the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance at this time. You're only directing staff to take the next steps to allow that to happen in the future. So I want to make sure that was clear to everyone. If it is, if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to our consulting team.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, John LaGuerta, Healthy Sustainable Communities, and Matt Brinkley from Green Top Planning. Pleasure to be back here and see you folks all again this this wonderful November evening here. And like, first off, just to really go over what we're going to just brief you on here tonight. I know you've seen this before, but this is probably the third or fourth time. And as the community development director and economy director, Charlie, he mentioned, this is the final concept, and then Matt will be later talking about the implementation. And, you know, I'll talk a little bit about the financial modeling tonight too, to give you an overview on that there. So as as you all know, up here on the screen on the left side here, this was the previous node that was done approximately 20-plus years ago. It sat dormant, not much activity is taking place. And as we know, all cities are challenged on trying to find revenue generating and commercial opportunities to really help sustain a long-term budget and grow. And I commenced the, you know, the city staff and the council and really looking progressively how this can help fill that shortfall. When you commissioned Eco Northwest to do a EOA on this area of their city, it came up that you had a shortfall here, almost 90 acres within the city. And really working with the city team and the, looking at how this new area could be beneficial to help you long-term sustain your your growth and to keep the needed services for the city. The city, you know, went forward, and we started at the beginning of the year here. And I really commend the team here at the city in the working to establish a technical advisory committee, which really, you know, casted a large net in January over the over the whole area of Dallas and brought good representation to the TAC. And that's really nice to see because we have folks from, you know, the transportation department that were on the on the committee. We had market rate housing, we had non-market rate housing. It was really exciting. We had, you know, folks that are in the commercial development, retail, office areas, hospitality. We had folks that also own land in the area that really understand that what needs to happen as you start moving forward here for beneficial growth of the city of Dallas. And and really there are after, you know, we had five technical advisory committees. And the concept you see over on the right was really the help of them helping us shape that. You know, Councilor Adams, she was great in helping and, you know. And I just want to commend all the advisory board there that came. They volunteered all their time for a couple hours, five times to do that. And then we had an open house. And what you see over here on the right, this concept board tonight, that Matt's going to talk about a little further though, that really just helps to to understand the future opportunities for the city of Dallas. Originally, the old study was about 60 tax lots with 40 different ownerships comprising about 122 acres. This expanded to 222 acres. Again, you're doing all the right things that we see in the city. You're putting in that sewer main infrastructure that's really kind of been critical to help this area expand and, you know, create that opportunity for commercial development to come in. And that's a great revenue generator for as the city continues to grow. And then also looking at the opportunities for market rate housing, affordable housing. And through all that, just to really talk about how this connects. Matt, I'm going to let you go from here and talk a little bit more on this final concept line that we came up with. You're muted. You need to be unmuted?
Okay, thank you for unmuting me. And Mayor Woods, President Schilling, councilors, Matt Brinkley, pleasure to be here tonight and talk to you once again about the Lock Rail node and the update to the master plan. So John's gone over a little bit of, you know, how we got to where we are. And as he mentioned, this conceptual plan, conceptual plan number four is, as we're calling it, and what will become the master plan for the node, addresses this deficiency in commercial employment land. I think the EOA identified a need for 94 acres, and this addresses, you know, most of that need within your existing urban growth boundary. In addition to that, there's also a large mixed-use area, we're calling it, on the south side of Ellendale, located on the south side of Ellendale, really in response to a comment that was made from the technical advisory committee about having that mixed-use node close to the higher-density residential that you already have south of Ellendale, going all the way down La Creole, and in close proximity to schools and all of your parks and recreation facilities that are further south on the Creole. And that mixed node, I think I should note, if I didn't mention it before when we were at the work session, is not necessarily vertical mixed-use buildings. That's something that we would like to see at some point in the future. But it's, it could be horizontal mixed use, so different employment, commercial, service, commercial, retail, commercial uses in close proximity to residential, and that being middle and higher-density residential. And that's that area on the south side of Ellendale. And then there's a good balance of medium and higher-density housing, both of which there was a need identified in your 2019 housing needs analysis that I think was West did. So again, the plan addresses that need as well. And connecting all of this stuff together, we envision a robust system of interconnected roads that provide both vehicular as well as active transportation connections. And when we talk about active transportation, we're of course talking about walking, biking, other non-vehicular ways of getting around. And that means, you know, bike lanes on road where that's appropriate and multi-use paths that are off-road in other areas. And you can see just a couple of cross-sections of what that would look like. So the roads that we're talking about are already kind of described in the current nodal plan. And I think those those roads would be sufficient. They're collectors and, you know, they're adequate for the kind of vehicular traffic that we would anticipate seeing. The multi-use path is dedicated to pedestrians, bikes, other forms of act transportation. See that on the right side there? And so what this means is that in the future, as this gets built out, and, you know, this is a 20-year plan, you eventually have a system where you have connections all the way from the La Creole Trail and the parks that are located along the the trail system, all the way up La Creole and Hawthorne, and going all the way up through the La Creole node, and then eventually connecting all the way across Kings Valley Highway to Rotary Park. So you have this kind of continuous system of trails and connections for people to be able to get around. And then next slide, John, I think is, we're going to talk about the.
Yeah, and and thank you for this, Matt. And, you know, one of the things that we always hear, every city's challenged with, especially around a metro region like, you know, Salem, Eugene, Portland, you, with the expansion. And Dallas is no exception, you know, League of Oregon Cities every year. This last October, every city was, you know, looking at, you know, budget shortfalls and how they try and maintain that, what they're having to do with SDC fees and how those things are going up. We all know inflation and infrastructure and the critical item in all of our communities here. And I commend again, like your staff here at the city, you know, just really looking at, what are the different ways that we can, as a city? You only have a few ways to have an opportunity to increase that increment, right? And so by looking at how this area becomes changed in the zoning over and how this project starts to help you with your forecast in the future, you can see that starts to really ramp up here. Once the infrastructure, again, the sewer net gets in there after about '26, '27, that incremental change starts to play place for for your community again. And again, just listening to, you know, you have national housing builders in your community right now. You have national brokers that want to be there, but you just don't have the commercial space. And and really moving moving this ball towards that goal line is really going to give you the opportunity to provide, you know, other revenue, higher revenues coming in in the future there. So that's exciting, and I think it's really important for, you know, a city and a, you know, your council and the staff to be thinking and looking at those opportunities there. So really commend you for that. And Matt is going to talk a little bit just from the timing of the standpoint of the implementation of the project here too. You're muted again? What's going?
I should not mute myself, apparently.
Oh, okay, that's because you're okay.
Mistake I have made twice now, and I've learned my lesson, so I will not mute myself until I can, I can be done.
I think I should, I'm just co-host, okay, sorry about that.
So anyway, as Charlie mentioned earlier, you're not, you're not being asked to actually amend the comprehensive plan, land development code, do any zone changes or anything like that tonight. It's moving the project forward, but should you want to move the project forward as the planning commission recommended, making the changes that you need to make is not that difficult. So there are some changes that need to be made in the comprehensive plan. Those are both in volumes one and volume two, so volume one being your goals, policies. And then volume two is sort of the kind of substance of the comprehensive plan. And a lot of those changes are pretty simple, they're pretty minor. They involve updating numerical references because we're changing acreages and things like that. And there's some minor substantive changes which are described in Technical Memorandum II, which we're working on and will be completed pretty soon. And so those changes aren't very significant in the comprehensive plans. Not not a lot of work to do. In the land development code, likewise, you have some changes that need to be made to the text, you know, changing numerical references. There are some minor substantive changes. And so, for example, one of those changes would be you have a, you have a section in the in the development code that talks about the phasing of the nodes and when public infrastructure is to be installed. And right now, the way the language works, there's a little ambiguity about whether or not the development code actually allows you to install the public utilities before the land, before the land is annexed. And so there's some things that you might want to look at there, but they're pretty simple changes to make. The development code generally is supportive of the kind of development that we've been talking about throughout this whole process with the technical advisory committee, both the commercial component of it and the kind of commercial that you want to see and how you want it to look and how you want it to feel here for the city of Dallas, as well as the mixed use and those other uses. So not a lot has to be done. The one challenge is probably the mixed-use area, and we would want to take a little bit of a closer look at that. You're how your your current commercial zones allow for or don't allow for, encourage or discourage that kind of mixed-use development. Right now, they do allow mixed use, but it's taking a closer look at it at a kind of finer grain to make sure that the urban design works for that. But I don't anticipate that it would be that difficult or really be that big of a change to your development code. So all of those things, I think, are are really pretty possible and can get done in a, in a quick period of time.
Yeah, and and I just want to conclude that, you know, I didn't mention earlier, but the other thing the city did is a really good job on getting the news out to the public, doing press releases, and then also building an interactive website and having a town hall that had over 80 participants that came to this to learn more about this concept plan. And, you know, and those are just great ways to engage the community in moving this project forward from that standpoint. So just excellent job by all in working through that process there. So and thank you for opportunity to present to you folks tonight.
Questions? Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, on the legends we have, there isn't any crosswalks indicated. On the, on the legends we have, there isn't any crosswalks indicated, but it appears that there's crosswalks all along the highway and up into the Lockreel Node. Is that in fact what those are that I'm looking at?
Yes, and that question actually came up with Planning Commission. You would have crosswalks at any legal intersection, Oregon state law, but those particular locations are identified to show that kind of connection throughout the two kind of distinct parts of the node, the part that's on the south side of Ellendale, the part that's on the north side. We talked a little bit about what those, what those crossings would look like. And that's something that, as you're updating your TSP, which I understand you'll be doing shortly, is something to look at very, you know, very closely. There are different kinds of treatments that make it easier for pedestrians to get across the street, as well as bikes and other modes of transportation. So that's something to look at very closely. The one thing that you might also be looking at are mid-block crossings, because of course, right now, there is not actually a road between La Creole and Hawthorne. And you might, there might be a road in the future. It's not one of the higher order collectors that we're talking about. It could be a local street that goes in there. But if there isn't, you probably want to have a mid-block crossing, because that's a, that's a long distance not to have a crossing. And people end up kind of making do with what they have and end up making their own mid-block crossings. So it's something to look at, and I think, you know, you're probably all familiar with things like rapid, repeating flashing beacons. Those are pedestrian activated lights, basically, that start flashing warning markers that you're going to enter into the walkway. It's not a stoplight, like a pedestrian activated stoplight, but it's more of an alert. That's something that you might consider and something that, you know, you want to be looking at in your TSP and, you know, talking to ODOT about. And fortunately, those are treatments that, that ODOT is more open to these days. And so that's, that's definitely something to be thinking about, thinking about as you, as you work on that TSP.
Any more questions?
I'm going to accept the update to Lockreel Node, Master Plan, Concept Number Four. As proposed, I further move direct staff to initiate comprehensive plan, map, and text amendment and development code text amendment process to appropriate the changes proposed to the Lockreel Node area.
Second.
Removed in second, any more discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, raise unanimously. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinances, ordinance eighteen eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section three point eight one six related to street trees. And this is a new amendment, you've not seen this yet. The reason it's coming as a first reading instead of through committee is because it's a very minor change. We identified recently through an application for a street tree removal and replacement that the approving authority in code is the Community Development Director, but in practice, it's been the Public Works Director for many years. And so we just need to fix that in the code. So that's all this is, is just a, a change in responsibilities to meet up with our current practice.
Questions? Ready to clear ordinance number eighteen eighty-nine to have passed its first reading. Second reading of ordinances, ordinance number eighteen eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section five point zero one six relating to the consumption of alcohol and controlled substances in public places.
Any more discussion for this? Senator House Secretary of.
Counselor Shane.
Yes.
Counselor Verden.
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Beriantos.
Yes.
Counselor Briggs.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Jants.
Yes.
I declare ordinance number eighteen eighty-eight to have passed. Pulling the vote on it next, yes, we just did, so. Make our ordinance number eighteen eighty-eight to have passed by unanimous vote. Next, resolutions, resolution thirty-five eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving changes in rates for refuse and recycling collection services and related services and repealing resolution number thirty-four ninety-five.
Any discussion?
I'd like to open up for discussion just to see if we could change and split it tonight into the, between the rate, the five point four and the additional yard debris, just to have more discussion on that. Just to, I mean, is that possible to do?
Yeah, if you want to, and the additional discussion would be on the yard debris and recycling.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to do that, I think, Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd probably want to just, you know, table the item for tonight, bring back a resolution with the correct exhibit, which just reflects the rate increase, and then have the discussion on the yard debris and recycling at a future meeting. Interested, if that's, if that's what the council wants to do, that's what you could do.
This doesn't have to be an option, so.
Yeah, you, you have one more, you have, you have one more meeting to adopt the resolution.
The reason is just to get some more feedback, because more thinking of, we were, we talked about how it would save the community money if, you know, they can maybe possibly go down to a smaller can size for the garbage if they're using to recycle. But I guess there's no discussion on how many, maybe half the city has the smallest cans, so that wouldn't even impact them at all. As well as, I don't know, maybe half the people don't even use those cans half the year, so it might not impact that as well, so.
Yeah, and I think we could ask Republic Services, and they could probably run a pretty simple report on how many, you know, residents in Dallas receive their services, which should be all of them, and what can sizes they have, they, they have all that information, so it should be a report we could get pretty easily.
Just for a little bit more discussion.
So we have a consensus of pushing this back a couple of weeks?
Sure. Sure.
The weekly recycling and yard debris for the four thirty a month, was that, that's not an optional? That's, that's gonna happen?
So as, as it's presented, everyone would pay that additional four dollars and thirty cents. On top of the five point four for the, for that weekly service. So that's what's presented. Counselor Jants is asking to come back with a resolution that just implements the rate increase and then have further discussion on the, the weekly yard debris and recycling. I can try to gather that input from Republic Services for the next meeting, just so you'll have that, but we'll, we'll present a resolution just with the five point four percent rate increase.
Plus, I picture all those streets lined up with extra cans all the way down. Or on the sidewalk.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring that back next meeting.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting into executive session pursuant to orders one nine two, six six zero, subsection two, subsection F.